Okay, it's six thirty and I call this meeting of the Manchester by the Sea by the order. Jeff.
Yeah.
Brian.
Here.
Kathy here, Anne is here and John.
John is here.
The meeting is being recorded. The first item is public comments on non agenda items. Is there anyone here who has any of those, including the board? Is there anyone online? Okay. Um. We have a, I have a short chairman's report. As you all know. Representative Baronte died this week. She had been our representative in the great general court for several years. I think she had, she had come down with pancreatic cancer before she started. Her courage in facing that is an inspiration for everybody. And, and the good works that she did for making Manchester, keeping Manchester in the interest of the public bodies is also of great importance. For those who haven't seen it, their, her service is on Thursday. The visiting, the visitation starts at ten?
Ten to twelve forty-five and then the funeral mass.
And this is at Saint Anne's in Gloucester. She will be missed by all of us, I'm sure. Okay, um, action, the next item is action items. Are there? Any? Do we have any new? Action items that we should make up?
Not, I don't have any new ones, but I had a question for Tony on the, you know, the tree policy timing. You had sent me a separate email on something that may require a different sense of urgency, so I, I just didn't know where that stood.
Yes, I, and I talked to Chuck today, Ruth had, she's away right now, she's there in England, there, will be back, I think, next week. But she had done a deep dive through the policy and highlighted some things that would be worth the, the converse, you know, to have a conversation with you and, and members of the.
Friends of trees?
Friends of trees. So I think, I would say next week he'll be able to give you those comments to you.
Okay, so we were looking for a meeting, a three-way meeting between myself, friends of trees and Chuck.
Yes.
So would we want to schedule it for next week or the following week?
Let me double check when Ruth will be back, so I think Chuck wants to go through it with her.
Okay.
Um, but I think next week would work, if not the following.
Okay, sounds good, thank you.
The first item on our agenda is the FY twenty-six class tax act, tax classification hearing.
Good evening, my name is Michelle Brantforty, I'm the principal assessor for the town of Manchester. And as we have done in the past, tonight we are meeting with the purpose of the classification hearing for the select board to determine the allocation of the local property tax to be born by the four classes of real property and personal property for fiscal year twenty twenty-six.
Michelle, can you interrupt for a moment?
Sorry, Michelle, but you were so eager, I didn't want to stop you. I'll need this procedure here. I move that the select board open the tax classification hearing.
Ready for the vote?
Yes.
Yeah, yes. Kathy.
Yes.
Brian.
Yes.
And Jeff says yes.
I won't.
You asked me to be fast.
No, that's on me, I actually said that. But don't repeat anything you said.
Pick up where you left off.
So you have to go back and start again?
No, 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 no.
So in deciding the allocation, the select court must adopt the residential factor. The residential factor is used to determine the percentage of a tax levy that is applied to each class of real and personal property. The Board of Assessors applies these percentages to the individual classes. The individual property classes, the select board must vote on the following in order to establish a tax rate. Classification shift. A residential exemption. A small commercial exemption and an open space discount. Some salient facts about fiscal year twenty twenty-six. Fiscal twenty-six was a recertification year. Every five years, the Department of Revenue recertifies the values and the, and audit the operations of the assessors office. Changes to valuation tables in the years between recertification years are called interim years. So the next four years are going to be interim years. With the next recertification year and fiscal twenty thirty, twenty thirty-two. The new growth is very similar this year compared to fiscal twenty twenty-five. Seventy-two percent of the new growth came from the residential sector and twenty-eight percent from commercial, industrial and personal property. We have a table with five previous years, so you can see the new growth. In those past five years, the total taxable value for fiscal twenty twenty-six is three billion nine hundred and eighty-four million two hundred and eleven dollars. Two hundred and eleven thousand one hundred and four dollars. Ninety-four percent of this total value is residential. And six percent commercial, industrial and personal property. And the fiscal year twenty twenty-five percentages were similar, they were the same as twenty-six. The tax levy calculation is listed on page four with an unused levy limit of two hundred and sixty-eight thousand two hundred and thirteen dollars and forty cents. The tax rate is the tax levy divided by the town's taxable valuation. The residential factor here in Manchester has historically been a residential factor of one, which means we've, we've had a uniform tax rate, there has not been a shift in the burden to commercial, industrial and personal property. The select board may shift the town's tax burden from the residential class to commercial, industrial and personal property classes as long as the shift does not exceed the minimum residential factor, which means the burden cannot be shifted more than fifty percent. Worksheets FY twenty-six, shift scenario and shift scenario impact show the impact if the tax rate was to be shifted. Please turn to addendums A, B and C for worksheets. So the first addendum is the one with the pie graph. And then, uh, so this shows us the allocation of the values and the tax levies and you can see on this pie graph. The largest portion being in value residential ninety-four point thirty-six percent. And then open spaces, the little red line down the middle, which is zero percent. Commercial, industrial and personal property are those shaded in blue and green. Tax levy very similar underneath. And if you turn to addendum C, we have some bar graphs which show how if we were to shift the burden from the uniform tax rate of eight dollars and seventy cents, which is what's projected for this year. It has not been approved yet by the Department of Revenue, but this is a projected tax rate. And if we were to shift the burden from the residential rate from eight dollars seven and seventy cents, maximum at fifty percent would be eight dollars and forty-three cents. But the burden transfers over to commercial, industrial and personal property to the highest amount would be thirteen dollars and three cents. If we go to addendum C is where we see the scenario where a shift of ten percent burden from the average residential value of one point seven three one million. If we were to shift the burden ten percent, there would be a decrease, a saving in tax dollars of a hundred and three dollars and ninety-one cents. The highest shift at fifty percent would be four hundred and sixty-seven dollars and fifty-eight cents. However, the impact to the commercial, industrial and personal property classes at ten percent, they would see an increase of nine hundred and twenty-seven dollars and four cents. With the highest shift at fifty percent of four thousand six hundred and sixty-seven dollars and fifty-six cents. And so for that reason, there has never been a shift from residential to commercial, industrial and personal property. Going back to the presentation, so this is the, that was the factor discussion and the impact. The next item would be a residential exemption. And residential exemptions are usually granted. It's up to thirty-five percent to shift the burden within the residential class from owners of moderately valued residential properties that are the principal residence of a taxpayer to higher assessed properties and properties that are not the principal residence or domicile of a taxpayer. This is not an actual exemption, it's a shift of residential taxes to non owner occupied property owners. So this exemption started in Cape Cod communities where most summer residents were second homes that were not owner occupied properties. Cities such as Cambridge, Somerville and Boston have adopted the residential exemption because they have a significant amount of non owner occupied multifamily properties such as apartment complexes. However, since most residential property owners in the community here consider Manchester to be their principal residence, adoption of the residential exemption would only serve to increase the residential tax rate while providing a tax increase to all Manchester by the Sea residential property owners who assess values over the average of one point seven three one million. And again, this exemption has never been adopted here in Manchester. A small commercial exemption is the next item. And a small commercial exemption of up to ten percent may be granted to qualifying commercial properties if the property is valued at less than one million dollars. And all of the businesses occupying the property have had ten or fewer employees on average in the last full calendar year as certified by the Commissioner of Employment and Training. The exemption goes to the building owner, not to the business owner. Therefore, depending on lease agreements, a small business owner may or may not benefit. A total of fourteen out of three hundred and fifty-one communities in Massachusetts have adopted this exemption. And some of those communities are Avon, Braintree, Chelmsford. Any saving from this exemption is available to only seven or eight commercial properties and the cost will be borne within the commercial and industrial classes. The average commercial assessment in Manchester by the Sea is a million seventy-seven thousand nine hundred and fifty-nine dollars. There are twenty-six commercial properties valued at less than a million dollars and only eight of these would qualify as eligible. For that reason, the town has never adopted this exemption either. And the last one is open space discount. And open space discount is really, it's a classification for a parcel that doesn't quite fit in any of the other four classifications. State law allows properties classified as open space to be taxed that are discounted of up to twenty-five percent from the uniform tax rate. The tax dollars lost by the discount are shifted to the residential class of properties, which includes developable vacant land. The local Board of Assessors must develop the criteria that must be met in order to classify a parcel as open space that meets a significant contribution for the benefit and enjoyment of the public criteria. This cannot be a piece of property that generates income. No communities in Massachusetts grant an open space discount. And the Board of Assessors use this classification sparingly since most land fits into other classifications. And the open space classification on its own makes no difference in the assessment of a property. Assessors have also observed that as the years have passed, many of the land parcels afforded a tax discount were developed anyway, regardless of the tax incentive employed to encourage protection of open land and/or be a deterrent to development. Presently, there are no parcels classified by the Board of Assessors as class two open space. In conclusion, historically Manchester by the Sea has retained a uniform tax rate with a residential factor of one. If you could take a vote on all of the four options.
I think we need to close the evidentiary portion first. And while we're in the evidentiary portion, we are allowed, anyone is allowed to ask questions. So are there any questions?
Uh, Kathy? Ready? Yep, I moved that the select board close the evidentiary portion of the hearing.
Second. All in favor? Okay, um.
Yes, is there any more discussion? Okay, then I move that the select board does not establish a residential exemption. Excuse me, I'm sorry, I move that the select board set the residential tax rate factor at one resulting in a single tax rate for all properties.
Second. John?
Yes.
Anne says yes, Kathy.
Yes.
Brian.
Yes.
And Jeff?
Yes.
Okay, I move that select board does not establish a residential exemption.
Second.
John?
Yes.
Anne, yes, Kathy.
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
And Jeff, yes.
I move the select board does not establish a small commercial exemption.
Second.
Yes.
John, yes, Anne, yes, Kathy, Brian?
Yes.
And yes.
Okay.
I move that the select board does not establish an open space discount.
Uh, Jeff?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Kathy, yes, Anne says yes, and John?
John, yes.
Okay.
I move that the board close the public hearing.
Second.
John?
Yes.
Anne, yes?
Yes.
Kathy, yes, Brian, yes, Jeff?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Michelle. And his timing was excellent.
A lot of work goes into that.
Long, anyway, it's easy to digest.
Thank you.
Michelle, thank you, we've got Carrie and the board.
Yeah.
They've all worked.
A lot of effort, for sure.
A lot of numbers. The differences over the years.
Yeah.
Which is undoubtedly a nuisance to put together, but it, it makes us.
It's all we do. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Have a good night.
Thank you. Yeah.
Okay. The second item is discussion items and the first of those is sidewalk snow plowing clearing.
Okay, so Chuck is on the call. Backup packet, you received a memo and I also have, you also receive the map, the snow clearing schedule. Map form, I also have it on my screen if you want me to pull it up on the. All right, so Chuck, are you, uh, are you on with us, Chuck?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Um, so what you're looking at on the screen is the map that is available on our website. The DBW put this together, I believe, last year to visually see the sidewalk schedule and it's all related to the following, the end of a storm. So throughout, throughout a storm, they got, the DPW staff that are out plowing the roads then transfer some, if not all, transferred into sidewalk operations. And within twenty-four hours of the storm, they will remove snow from the red marked sidewalks. Within seventy-two hours, the blue, uh, black is property owner responsibility. And then simply put, if a storm, if we get hit with another storm within the seventy-two hours or, or forty-eight or twenty-four hours, the clock restarts itself. Obviously, the priority for the town is to have the roadways cleared first and then once we're done with that, into sidewalks. It's not, I would say, Chuck, please chime in, I mean, for me, I would say it's not always that it's going to be perfectly executed to this plan. Uh, you never know if you have a snowstorm that is, you know, a two-hour storm or a twelve-hour storm. If it's multiple storms in a row, we could also have other emergencies like a water break or a sewer break, you know, there are things that can come up that can kind of uh, pull on the needs of our staff. So this is the goal, this is what we strive to accomplish, but always there can be hiccups in that plan. Chuck, do you want to add to that?
No, I think that's, that's pretty much the gist of it. The only other thing I would add is, you know, the, the guys are human and so, you know, definitely on the longer duration storms, you know, we need to work in breaks and, you know, people need to get relieved. I think the other thing that, you know, will happen with a small department like ours is, you know, people have other obligations, you know, they have loved ones or, you know, they're caregivers for people and so sometimes that pulls them away. So we're not like typically at full strength for, you know, a full twenty-four hour period. People, people have to rotate on, rotate off. And, you know, we do have on-call contractors that help, uh, you know, that do a few of the routes and stuff. So we're, you know, it's always a balancing act to make sure that we're, you know, meeting our objectives, but also that, you know, people can tend to, you know, matters at home or, uh, you know, just other things like Tony mentioned that come up like, uh, you know, the occasional water main break or, you know, returning back to, you know, different operations that need attention.
And then of course, you know, equipment failures can happen uh, throughout a storm event as well that can kind of change how you're responding.
For sure. Yep, we do, we do have a non-call mechanic or we have a full-time mechanic on staff that, you know, will help. But again, the equipment malfunctions are not just related to sidewalk track, tractors. We also have the, you know, the rest of the fleet that takes up the bulk of his time and these things happen, so.
Um, first off, are there questions from the board?
Yeah, um, so I asked that this be put on the agenda, so thank you Chuck and Tony. So my question is, because this is, I think I mentioned this before, this is the first time, this is the first place that I have lived where the town plows sidewalks. So it's new to me because every place else I've lived, property owners do it, doesn't matter if it's a business or if it's, you know, a home. So what I'm wondering is, have we looked at other communities that do this to make sure that what we're asking Chuck's team to do is reasonable for the staffing and equipment that we have? Because this looks like a lot for a town of this size and I'm curious as to, you know, how, I, it's looks like the heater and, you know, roots to school is kind of what we're targeting here, but we also go all the way out to Ocean Street, we go further up. So I'm just wondering how we decided that this was the right number of miles or whatever of sidewalk to plow?
Uh, so, you know, that actually predates me. This was, uh, like Tony said, this came up last year and we put together this map and so I sat down with Sean because, you know, when, when I first got here, seven, eight years ago, you know, it had always just been done that way. And so, you know, I never really questioned it. We did have the, you know, the equipment that I mentioned in the memo, both the pre-NOF and the MT. So those were kind of already here and, you know, that's the way they always did it. So, you know, to be perfectly honest, that really hasn't been vetted in that way. I will say, you know, I've lived in other town, my current town and, you know, other towns I've lived in, they do, you know, have a kind of core business district or schools that they do respond to. So I think that is, like you said, where this started from or, you know, where it was. And I think it just, over the years, it evolved into, you know, what you see in red, what you see in blue and, and otherwise. So I could, I could look into that. I, I think that might be one of those things that folks are, you know, not happy if we, if we start neglecting streets. So the other thing I would say is, you know, the, in the time that I've been here, it hasn't really been a huge problem on our snow ops in terms of, you know, kind of meeting the expectations and, you know, being able to do it. We had the equipment, like I said, people were supportive when we, we did replace the pre-NOF in twenty nineteen. So, you know, all, all things considered, that's just the way it's, the way it's always been and I haven't attempted to change it, but you can look at it.
I, so I appreciate all that, Chuck, I, I think it's worth taking a look at it because, um, personally, I'd rather the red areas, if that's what we're going to target as important areas, I'd rather they get done really well than focus on outline areas, but that's just my thought. Um, the other, I, I'm going to disagree a little bit with the fact that the, you know, people have been happy. I know my neighborhood has not been and they just got tired of calling. So I don't know who they spoke to and how long ago they got tired. But for example, you know, the core district on Central, when you take a right up to go up Pine Street, more than seventy-five percent of the time, the snow plowing on the opposite side of the street where the gas station is, that's the sidewalk that got plowed instead of staying, you know, on Pine Street where the telephone poles are and it's a bit of a challenge. But, you know, they, they did some things regarding plowing that didn't make sense to the community and they kind of just got tired of complaining. So I just, I, I think we have limited resources and Chuck's team works really hard. And I'm just asking that we make sure we understand, if this is, these are the areas we want to focus on, does it make sense to make sure they get done really well and be a little more lenient with some of the other areas? Because if you lose one of those sidewalks in red after a bad storm, you could lose it for the whole winter. And that's what happened, used to happen on Pine Street. We would lose that, I guess, north side sidewalk, we'd lose it for the whole winter, just one bad storm. So I just, that's really the reason for my asking it beyond the agenda. Are we asking them to do too much?
I think it's like Chuck said, it's always been done this way, my whole lifetime here. And you have, you know, you get an ice storm or something, you know, you're going to have issues, there's no way around it. It depends on the storm, but.
Yeah.
I don't think you're going to cut, you know, you're talking about cutting people out altogether and I don't agree with that.
I, I didn't, I'm not suggesting we cut people out altogether, I'm just saying that this community says they're going to do a lot. Okay, and as someone who has lived in other places, the other places where I used to live, the sidewalks were in much better shape. And I'm talking cities, suburbs, rural area in New Hampshire because the expectations were clear and people knew what was going to happen and when it was your responsibility, you did it or you got peer pressure from your neighbors. Or, you know, depending on where you live, you could get a bill. But I just, I just, I'm wondering if we're asking Chuck's team to do too much.
Have you always, have you always met this, Chuck? Or I wouldn't say always, but virtually always?
So I mean, I guess I'm not going to argue with Kathy if she says her, her, her people she's talking to aren't, you know, complaining anymore. But like I said, you know, we, we certainly, you know, get complaints, I don't want to make it sound like we're perfect. But I would say that by and large, you know, we kind of know the areas where we have trouble, we try and address them. If, if there were a long stretch of sidewalk that was completely untreated and unattended to, I would be surprised, but I'm not going to completely rule it out.
Right by the powder house.
Right, so I mean, so, you know, now you, you got it on my radar. I'll, I'll definitely be watching every time I drive by there. You know, I, I go by there once a day, no matter what, so. Yeah, so, and I'll, I'll, I'll mention it to Sean. Um, you know, there, there may have been extenuating circumstances or, you know, if it, if it was a whole season thing, I, I guess I'd, I'd kind of be surprised about that, but that's not to say it can't be possible. And then, so, so we'll, we'll take it from there.
Yeah.
I'm trying to help, is like, that's really my point, Chuck, I, I don't expect it to be perfect, I'm just wondering, are we asking them to do too much?
Is it, is this map on the website or is it just kind of a reference?
It's on the website.
Yeah, so, so we put it on, uh, last year because, you know, like, like, it's never really been written down. Um, so, you know, that was the first step was writing it down. So this is, this is where we are at. Yeah, like I said, I was, when I was talking to Tony about this, uh, you know, I, I think we made this map, uh, you know, after the one really bad storm last year and, and I don't know that we had a big storm after that storm, you know, we might have had a couple of small ones, but I don't think we had anything big where this map really would have been kind of front and center. So, you know, going into the season, you know, Um, so, you know, going into the season, you know, we might get some snow tomorrow, or certainly in the next month or two, so, um, you know, we'll see, we'll see how it goes, but. I'm, I'm certainly, uh. Willing to walk it back if we need to walk it back, and hopefully we can do better.
How, how do the homeowners that are on the lines in black know that they have a responsibility, not identified with the timeline? Is there some way that they know? I mean, I'm looking at my street, and I will tell you, my neighbors don't know.
Yeah, no, like I said, I, I don't think it was really written down until last year, and we didn't really have a chance to kind of put it out there, I thi- I think we have talked to Tiffany about this. You know, last year, as, as well as, uh, you know, going into this, this winter season, so. I think, you know, definitely be reasonable to put it back out there and, you know, make sure folks understand that they're kind of responsible for. The areas in front of their property, and hopefully they can, they can meet their own expectations.
It's a featured comment in the tide or something.
For sure.
Yeah, the link this is, if you wanna know you're in the, uh, black line area.
I mean, I think I would, as, so I agree, Chuck, I, I think this was a really good addition to last year's, um, you know, discussion. I would, i- if we're gonna improve on the communication, I would ask. That we just cite Massachusetts law, right, so that the law is that the cities and towns are allowed to. Require property owners, you know, to shovel the sidewalks, and most of them do. So it is, uh, you know, fewer. Towns are like ours, that, you know. You know, shovel and plow to this extent on the sidewalk, so if you've lived somewhere else, you probably know to do it, but if you. Grew up here and never left, then you might not.
I don't know.
I don't know, I mean, there's certainly there's core, you know.
Not. Fully aware of what the, what the, what the law might state, um, you may be. Risking some liability by not, uh. Clearing snow in front of your property.
Yes.
But I don't know how much, um, the town can enforce that without a local bylaw. Right. Actually, towns are, you know, in order for the town to write you a ticket for not.
Yeah.
Or something like that, you'd have to have a local bylaw.
I don't think most of that.
We do.
And I don't think most do that, but there's, again, it starts with setting expectation, to John's point, you know. Not everybody knows, especially if they've lived here a long time and had it done for them.
Right, right.
And.
The other. Another common problem is somebody had, the, the town has gone by. Somebody sends in driveways plowed and blocks both sides.
Right.
The driveway and the sidewalk, and.
Right.
Maybe we could actually put something in the cricket and on the website saying, you know. If your law company has just blocked the sidewalks. You or they have got a clean lot.
Yeah, well, they're not allowed to push snow in the street anyway.
That's definitely not allowed.
A lot.
Right.
Yeah, but it.
But the side.
Somebody's plowing your driveway, they can't just push it out in the street.
Right.
Right.
Can't, they shouldn't push it into the sidewalk. If it's in the red area in particular.
Right, and the reason. Well, I, I think the reason it's important to have the discussion though is if we have more multifamily housing, right, the more dense. Densely populated you are, the more this is an issue, because there's nowhere to put the snow. So you actually, like during the big blizzard in twenty fifteen or whatever, I mean, we had to hire people to. Take the snow off the property, cause there was, there was legit no place to put it.
Right.
So, those are, you know, extenuating circumstances, but if, depending on where people live, they literally may not have a place to put it. So that's why I just see this as.
But that's the homeowner's responsibility.
Well, they might not know it. Which is the issue, right?
Yeah.
If you've got a one acre lot, you know, good for you, you've got plenty of places to put this now, but if you're. In the red area, it's, it's.
I think we, I think we can, you know, certainly, leading up to a storm, during a storm, post-storm, we can certainly. Put, uh, messaging out to the public about, you know, everybody kind of doing their part and making sure that the.
Reverse nine-one-one.
You know. And. If that doesn't work, then we could think about a bylaw that is a little bit stronger if we really wanted to. And, and I, I think it's, but it is a, it is somewhat. Um, variable based on. The type of storm you have and how frequent it is, you know, this, this map is great, and it's a great start, and.
Yeah.
And, you know, if you have a few inches, uh, once a week or something, it's, 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 this is certainly achievable, if it's. If it's a foot of snow, and then three days later, another foot of snow, you start to lose. Room, you know, and there's, it's, it becomes problematic, so we.
Hold sidewalks for the season, if it's not removed, and that's what has happened to the red areas, you know, so I just think. Again, this all started with expectation setting, so now we're, we're clear, I guess we're, we're saying we wanna keep the same expectation. But, um, you know, I do think as other properties get developed, we, we need to think about that.
Mm-hmm.
Because it's not, like I said, even cities, you know, small business owners, my fa- father, if he wanted someone in his store. He was out there with the snow blower at six AM.
Yep.
And it didn't matter, blizzard of seventy-eight and all, right, so, you know, it's just making sure we're not. Putting too much on Chuck's team, that, that, uh, they get a lot to do.
And making sure that people understand.
Right.
And this would be an excellent. The next.
Video. We'll have a shovel in.
They'll do shovel.
Yeah, Sarah Melish, eleven Bennett Street, um, I would make a suggestion that they relook at the map. Um, currently, as people know, I'm a walker.
Mm-hmm.
And currently, the state is plowing the north side of Bridge Street up to Crocker's Yard. The town plows the south side from Ashland to Pine, which turns to ice because it shaded. By houses, if instead the town plowed the north side. To Pine, connected into what the state plows, and it gets sun, so it melts, and all that entire sidewalk. Is the back of houses. So nobody accesses their houses, so it's, nothing happens to them, and then if they had. A crosswalk. Across Lower Pine. So one could get to the north side of Central, which is the sidewalk that melts. And the south side is pure ice. It. It would involve the same amount of sidewalk clearing, but it would make. Lives a lot easier, because it's very dangerous to walk on Bridge Street. Um, and it's very danger, and, and the section where you come off the crosswalk at Bridge and Pine. Because there's posts there.
Yeah.
They can't plow that, so you can't get from the crosswalk to a sidewalk without walking. A ways down Central. You have to walk by, um, to the entrance to fifty-two.
Yeah, there's a lot of, it's a problematic area, there's a lot of hills.
I just think it could be looked at, and it would make people's lives easier, it makes no sense. To be plowing the south side if you could plow the north instead, if you don't get any sun on the south side.
Is there any other comments on this? Anybody?
Okay, this was a, the, the first of the discussion items, we don't need to give a vote on anything. Um. The. Next is one that. I included, which is the. Uh, Desi, chapter seventy, school funding formula statement. Um. The. School committee has put together a letter and. Um. They would like. The two towns to sign onto it, um. And I have reservations about it.
I do too.
Specifically, um. The section on chapter seventy formula does not count, because. That is an issue that. That is under local control, and Desi has no. They can't walk in and tell us that our proportions formula is no good. And this raising, it seems pointless.
Oh, also, they're not figuring the capital into this, we're paying seventy-three percent of the capital. So, you're looking at another school coming.
Yeah.
And you're, and we're gonna be paying that seventy-three percent of that capital. So to say we're not. I know this isn't exactly saying we're not paying our share, or our ability to pay is higher, I understand that, but. How much more should we be paying?
Well, well, actually, just so on that, I agree with what you, everything you said, Jeff. My question is, I thought ability to pay was based here on property values, not, um, income. Right, and so I. Then I disagree, ability to pay. I, I just personally disagree with the concept of ability to pay being based on property values, cause if someone inherits their home and. And they run a lower income level.
Right.
That, that, that value of their house means nothing unless they sell.
The two things that. That make sense to me in this letter, and we might consider sending something ourselves. Um, are the fact that the formula, chapter seventy formula, has a very low estimate of what health insurance is.
Yeah.
Very low est- estimate of what special education is, they're both in the low single digits. And in fact, they are each over twenty percent. Increase o- year over year.
Also, it doesn't include your transportation cost, even though you get a stipend for being a. Uh. For the district. Um. But not everything's figured into chapter seven.
No.
So.
Well, this is specifically Desi is looking at the chapter seventy formula, and this is a several year project.
Right.
Um, and, and they want some level of, of response, uh, by the end of the year.
I mean, it's not, I mean, everybody can see, it's not keeping, even close to keeping up with inflation.
Right, right.
Your school of choice is at five thousand dollars, which was. Implemented back in nineteen ninety-three, if you figure that for inflation. Realistically, right now, it should be like eleven thousand two hundred dollars.
Hmm.
So, I mean, that's like a giveaway.
Right.
Hmm. On the other hand, the, the district has a choice of whether they take.
Right, I understand that, but it's.
Yeah, it's.
You know, it's not.
But if it was a, if it was a good amount, a proper amount.
Right, if you could get.
Courage, you know, school choice in a way to help maximize the utilization of our facilities.
Right, so our minimum, our figured minimum contribution is like, I forget the number, it's like fifteen thousand dollars. I mean, if, if, if we got even close to that at twelve or something, then yeah, it would be worth it.
So I agree with Anne, I, I like the, the concept of, you know, agreeing with the health insurance, special ed and school choice numbers are just wrong. And, um, but I'm very uncomfortable with talking about, um. You know, property values, income, I, I just don't. The wording.
Well, you. Your CEY is, that's, that part for your capital is baked into your district agreement.
Mm-hmm.
So that's already. Figured in. I mean, as far as the rest of it.
Right, but I thought the way it was worded here, the, the memo. They were expressing concern that the formula does not calculate required contributions for the two towns in similar proportions, right?
Right.
To your point, it has nothing to do with it, it's our agreement, so. Why, why mention?
Well, it's your agreement beyond minimum contribution. So Desi's gonna figure it up to minimum contribution, and then anything else, so you're like. Twelve or thirteen thousand dollars over minimum contribution per pupil. So that's, that's where it leaves the table from, for them.
Right. Oh. What would people feel about?
I mean, I think you, I'd be able to sign this if you just took that excerpt out.
The chapter seventy formula does not calculate a down to state funding assumptions.
Yeah, I mean, personally, I agree with the rest of it, but. That part I don't.
Okay, and there's a school committee meeting tomorrow night, um, and I will explain that Manchester. The Board of Selectmen, um, feel that the section on the, the required co- contributions is. Not, we don't, we disagree with it, and that we would be willing to. Co-sign on the rest of it if they're willing to.
I, I mean, I'm good with that, I love.
Failing that, come back at the next meeting with. Something that we could send in on our own, if they choose not to make that.
Yeah, I'm good with it. What's?
I, I, I imagine the, the CEY is not. Backed it into the chapter seventy formula. For a reason. Right, it's a, it's a.
Well, it is.
It's a data element that, oh, go ahead.
It is up to, well, uh. A formula of that is up to your minimum contribution. So they tell you what your minimum contribution is, they say it's whatever, fourteen thousand dollars, whatever it is. After that, it's on your district to figure out.
Right.
The. I think we're clear on that. Of, coming?
No.
No, it sounds right.
Okay, and the next item on our discussion is the Public Mermaid's sculpture, um. And. Sorry, everyone, I have a question.
Hi, hi, everyone, thank you for having me. All of us. Thank you, Seattle.
Can you just give us your name and address, because?
Yes, it's Elisa Van Adley, and the address is Five Forest Lane in Manchester. Yeah. And, uh, I just kinda wanted to share with you all the progress that we've made, and, uh. And yes, uh, video, uh, that would be nice, maybe. Um, so maybe by watching the video already gives you an idea of where we're at, and then we can maybe. Discuss that further, we've worked it out before, or I can.
I would say introduce a little bit more, and then we can watch the video.
Sure, so, since we met, I had some homework to do, cause you guys wanted me to see the harbor master. And the conservation committee will have a formal approval, and, um. Fire has been very supportive of this project, that has been happening a lot, by measuring the side and doing everything that there was. Here's the letter of approval signed by Ashley Marsall, the special committee, and, uh. The vision expanded because, uh. I started thinking about this sculpture, that's covered with high tide and a color with high tide. And, um, I thought that it would be nice to, for this one to be the first of the tide keepers, a series of tide responsive sculpture. First one in Manchester, but one in town of Cape Town, so it kinda creates a bond of people in the town, and it creates the. The trails of the tide keepers. Each sculpture indeed would have an explanation of the tide, we have four main tides, so that makes sense, we have four towns. So it would be found like an educational project, because, uh, schools and everyone can go there and. They're studying the tide, okay, let's go see the tide keepers and learn about more, more about the tide. Paying attention to, uh, nature, recreating a str- a strong bond with the ocean. And, um, as I said, I would have, um, I'm the exhibition chair of the New England Sculpture Association, so I have, uh. Many contacts in the art world, and we, you have an article in the folder, I have actually two bigger ones, cause it's pretty small. And, uh. We were featured on this month, um, our New England magazine, which is project of a man who's in the tide keepers. There is a lot of energy that is moving around this beautiful project, everyone, we were on the. On the second at the Manchester by the Sea Festival, so I introduced it to the whole town. And we got a lot of positive response from everyone, and even more positivity came from Ed France, who said that. This would be like the first one of the tide keepers, because the whole community of Cape Town got excited. And, uh, I started sculpting the mermaid, so I have the tail that is, uh. Almost done, and she's beautiful, Cape and Granite donated the granite that goes under the mermaid. So we're a pretty movie. almost done and she's beautiful, Cape and granite donated the granite that goes under the mermaid, so we're pretty moved with this. I applied for five oh one C, we are the Tide Keepers Foundation, we are pending approval, so now I am uh preparing the mermaid, already in contact with the foundry, she will be probably ready in a month and a half. I was planning to have her casted, because the foundry takes time, we're there in January, so I need to raise some money, I already have some private donating uh towards this cause and I have a lot of support, it seems, from banks. I might have like the one big sponsor. The thing is that since I am pending approval, I'm not, I can't provide tax exemption, so I got in contact, we're members of the Cape and Chamber. So the branch of the Cape and Chamber, which is called the Cape and Community Foundation, uh it's a nonprofit branch of the uh Cape and Chamber, is working with us to become the, our fiscal sponsor, basically. But to be our fiscal sponsor, so people could donate towards this cause, who is like the creation of Atlantis. Um, through them, they would take a percentage, but they were like, but you, you have a permits, but you don't have really a final approval from town. So then, that's why I spoke to Tony and John and I'm here tonight, but then we going going deeper into the discussion, we discovered that we are going to probably need some extra permits that will work, will work towards like getting. And so basically, tonight, I'm here to see if you guys, I I wanted to show you where we're at and I hope you're excited too about the project, because it's really an amazing and beautiful project, I think that it's going to be great for Cape Town, for Manchester and Cape Town. It's going to bring in tourism, it's going to bring back the magical, an already magical area, you know. So I want to, for you to see the project and I wanted to understand if I have your support, if I get this permit, I don't know if it's going to be enough at this point for the community foundation to be like, yes, let's go forward. But I kind of wanted to touch base and and show you where we, where we are at. And so, so we are filming a documentary and this is basically the first five minutes of the documentary, four minutes. And it it will air on Cape Town sixteen twenty-three and Great Channel, we have had contacts with Channel Four and Five. So it's, there is a lot of energy moving around this, again, like I'm saying, so that's it.
I'll play the film. All these kids. Twenty twenty's kids. Tucker, oh, good.
Yeah.
Did you hear sound right now?
I received this in the practice, the tide by
Hold on. I'm gonna get the heck out of there. Yeah. I don't know how to send the sound, there's the
The sound on my phone, otherwise it's playing at the same time and
I think you have to feed it directly through sixteen twenty-three if you want.
You'd be fine to just, I I've never had a problem with streaming and with doing this screen share, so try it again. Does anyone else have their audio on on Zoom right now?
Not getting any sound.
It's on YouTube, so I don't know if you, if you're capable of sharing it.
I'm not capable of sharing it on my side.
Otherwise, I guess, yeah, I'll be on my phone and we can listen to it from this.
Why don't we, what I can do, we can um we can share this, you know, onto our social media or something like that, I can send it to the select board so they can watch it at another time. And we'll put it on our, we'll put it on our um social, you know, Facebook and and other things like that, since we're running into a to an issue, is that okay?
That sounds good.
Yeah. Can you say it's on YouTube?
Yes, it's on my YouTube channel. Actually, looking for those to see.
So what is, what is needed, Tony, from us tonight?
So I, I think, uh, you know, some communication of support to continue to move forward. Um, I spoke with Cape Town Community Foundation as well to try, try to find out what they needed in order to execute an agreement, you know. What they need is a little bit more than I think what we can provide tonight. Um, there's still some questions about uh whether this is going to require a chapter ninety-one permit or license, depending on the, on, on the proposal. Nate and Bion spoke with DEP to get some input. It was even, you know, we had some question about whether it met the definition of a structure under chapter ninety-one. So there are some different elements of uh of the project that Nate and Bion are going to speak um with the EP about to find out what type of permitting or licensing it's going to trigger.
I I don't have any permit that we have, we regularly offer that covers this.
Right, it's not a temporary it's not a temporary
Not a category.
Temporary structure, um, so it wouldn't fall under ten A. It, whether it requires a chapter ninety-one permit or license could be dependent on a couple of different factors. Um, and even if it was we have to work through some of the details of the proposal, but if it was, uh, you know, fully submerged at some point, uh, that could trigger an army corps permit. Uh, so we want to be, we want to make sure um that all those boxes are checked before you know, we officially give it the the green light moving forward, we don't know yet what those if those are required, what type of additional work is going to be needed leading into that. But it sounds like um sounds like Nate and Bion's conversation with DEP um was positive, that they felt like there was a potentially a simpler process to go through where it's just a statue, it's not an active structure that you are, you know, standing on or operating from or anything like that. So I think that, you know, some sort of supportive uh commentary, I don't necessarily think it's, it's a vote, I think it's more just, you know, are we all okay with moving forward and, you know, exploring this next phase?
And we as a town are going to take some responsibility of doing that research, as far as permitting is required.
Yeah, we're, we're gonna work, yeah, we're gonna work together on it. Ultimately
We, we haven't told anybody, the select board hasn't said, no, don't spend any money on that.
I would assume that um the town would have, if a permit is required, the town would have to apply for it, uh, because it is town property that it would be sitting on. And I, I believe it will be gifted to the town.
It's a gift to the town.
Um, so, and then at, at that point, we'll actually have to take a vote to accept the gift. But there's still some, I'd say, some engineering type questions that need to be answered.
First, I mean, we're really blazing a trail here, nobody's done anything like this, right?
Right.
It doesn't exist in the world, like the trails of the tide keeper, so I imagine that it would be pretty big, you know? Because like, that's why even uh even Bion did not know, because like no one has ever done this, you know, there was a tour in England, but you know, in a river and and they get covered and it's like a bunch of words, the military guy, but this does not exist. So I think it would be a beautiful addition to Manchester and and so that's why maybe, you know, we were not prepared, we went forward until now, and if it was not for the fiscal sponsor, maybe we would have gone forward over this last minute, so it's probably best that all these questions are coming now, so we addressed everything before, you know, been there with a mermaid and be like no, you can't.
I, I have a couple three four questions. I think it'd be very sad if it were positioned so that at a, at a king tide, she drowned. So
Yeah.
So what you show is as a base here, um picture with the harbor um is at significantly long time.
It's not the base, the base you would see in the documentary. So, yeah.
Okay, fine, so
It's like the base is like, uh, it's five feet of base that we have. So with Tom Baker, that is the more Manchester mooring, we're thinking about doing two mooring bases, they are like one foot tall and six feet of diameter, one top of each other. And then we have five feet of granite, so it's like one boulder and another boulder, and everything is connected with bronze rods. So on the mooring base, there's like bronze rods that come out and keep the granite in place. And then from one boulder to the other, you have bronze rods that go, that are like cemented in, so it doesn't move. So basically, you're already at seven feet of base.
Okay.
And then you're going to have four feet of mermaid in a seated position, which would be like a ten foot human being, she's big.
Well, invited to my studio.
You're invited to my studio if you want to see the progress.
But our, our king tide should be eleven, overland.
She would be underwater, king tide, because we are planning with Bion, we were thinking that the normal tide is eight point two. So with normal tide or high tide or let's say even higher tide than usual, she would be still out, but with king tide, she would be covered. But he said that the only house that we have that basically has apple is the house of Grace and Hattie. Uh, Safari, I don't know if that is his last name, but uh, it's the guy that bought the buildings here and is redoing, but yes. So and basically, the king tide happens twice a year, one is in October and one, it lives in February. And no one goes out and there's only one house that potentially could go out, so Bion said that we're not, we're on no risk for that. And basing that
It's going to be underwater, does that make a difference?
That's some of the questions we want to, we want to check with DEP, you know, if it's just a king tide issue or
We could plan her to be taller, that's an option, but the, the option of having her taller means that then she will be not interacting with the tide as much, because we're basing the height on an exception and not on the nor on the regular tide. So the effect of our interacting with the tide would be different. The wild factor of maybe having her, you know, up to here at high tide and then completely unveil a low tide, that would be not there anymore, because she would be always maybe out. So something to keep taking into consideration, but it's an option.
Of the other, my other concern is, is if I understand the location, it's kind of, it's across a small waterway, which is usually wet from Mascanomo Park, the end of Mascanomo Park.
So that was the remaining of a mill, fact I've been working with Matthew from the Manchester Museum, and that was like Mr. Allen's mill. And the wall is like the remaining of the Yes, exactly.
Is, is that area actually solid enough so that your whole thing isn't going to gradually, is that making a lot?
Yes, Tom Baker, that has been, is a Manchester resident, has been always has been always like here in town, knows the, that area very well, because it's his job, he said that, that there is no risk in that area, because it's like pretty solid. And then he would like apply the same principle that he applies for the moorings, so the mooring bases on the base and
Well, the, the idea of moorings is that they do sink into the muck, yeah.
But like that, speaking to both Bion and Tom, they said that there were no issues in placing her in that area. Actually, the only house that has a boat and goes out has been asking for a marker for that specific place for a long time, so that would act as a beautiful marker. Yeah, so
So where this is, is all rock, right off the point, right off the end of
I, I think you're actually mounting on the wall, it's a wall there, isn't it?
Yes.
Ten more feet to the left, you would be in the muck, like you're saying.
So this is on top, gonna be on top of that wall, which is now
So and then there is like a little part where there is nothing, and then there's the, the remaining of the actual mill, which is called Days Creek. And that's where she would be, which is a great spot, because it's actually really right in front of Mascanomo Park on that triangle. So uh for, as an aesthetic, a vital view, people always go there all the time, so just like watch the sunset and enjoy the area.
And she would, she would be across some water from that, actually Mascanomo Park, which would cut that on the number of people who would dress her or climb.
Still might be some of that. And Bion, Bion has accepted that.
Bion didn't seem to be concerned at all about impact to navigation of the harbor. And it, it's good news to hear, you know, John, um, John's, is it Tom, Tom Baker's input there. If it requires permitting from DEP, we may need, we may need a little bit more investigation and assessment. Because certainly at different tides, it could take wave action, you don't want something that's going to sink or fall over, you know, you don't want to make sure it's gonna not anchor correctly, so there's, there's needs, I think there needs to be a little bit more on the engineering side uh analysis and communication with the state.
Yeah, I think I understand exactly where it's going to be, that, that's the remainder of a riprap wall. It was built so, so as to enclose Days Creek to make, so that there was
The new one, or because it was direct in the water through that opening, so then, so it would get like current for the mill to work.
Sounds good.
I know, I'm from a conceptual perspective, culturally and economically, because I think there's a big economic element here.
Everyone is so excited, I'm speaking to banks and I had a meeting the other day with the Bank of Loser, they were so excited, they're like I have potential of having even like a single sponsor for this. And I think that it would bring so much to the town, because it's going to be a statement piece. In that video, you will see more of my artwork, so that would probably give you peace of mind also in terms of the beauty that it's going to be, because the rendering that I did is reliable for the posture, that is going to be the posture that she has. But like when I create like the, the, I believe she's gonna be much more beautiful than that. As I said, it's happening, I'm creating her, I would love her to be at the founder in general, because the founder takes a long time. But with this, I know that we have to follow the rules, so it's gonna take, take the time it takes, but I still I'm excited and
Sounds great, thank you very much. Thank you, looking forward to the gift.
Can I make a brief comment?
Hello?
Sure.
Yes.
Yeah, Steve Garhurt from the Downtown Improvement Committee, uh, just want to say that I, that we, uh, this is a little adjacent to what, to our specific remit, but the businesses in town that we talked to are very interested in having more points of interest, because the, such as seaside one or the museum, or this could be another point of interest. And in the long run, um, it could be as much as a, a symbol of Manchester as the Copenhagen mermaid or the Gloucester fisherman uh that could lead to people uh having more enjoyable time in town and coincidentally spending more money at our, at our local businesses. So without making, the, the, the art, I will leave to those who are averse in that, but from a business point of view, I just want to say it seems like a really good idea, thank you.
Thank you.
I might add with Steve's comment, the tide comes in and out three hundred sixty-five days a year. I might add with Steve's comment, the tide comes in and out three hundred sixty-five days a year.
Right.
Yes, not just in the summer, and I think that's really kinda what you're thinking, we have plenty of visitors in July. I'm only curious what's gonna happen in, you know, October, November, March.
It's a while she's coming for.
When she's covered in ice. Comes an icy.
People go to Copenhagen all year long, and this is not, yeah, I, when I'm thinking about this, I'm thinking about like this being like the first piece of the tide keepers, so this is going to be a unique tide keeper, you know, a unique region for this feature, for the tide keepers trails that don't exist anywhere in the world. So I think that it's going to attract tourists, it's already beautiful without the tide keepers, but my hope is that this is going to bring more art, more natural beauty.
And I I think you understand that this is the first one, and once we have figured out what the what the requirements are, the rest of them will be easier.
Yes.
But we may not get to your hope for January.
No, I know, January I will make it happen anyways, because I'm thinking that I'm sculpting now, so I can't spend my day after like keeping her wet. So January, January I will hopefully have money for the mold, which I will. And so I'm going to get a mold, and then that way I will have beautiful picture of the finished mermaid, so people that are going to donate towards this cause already can see how she looks like, if we want, just people, just big donors, I wanna keep the wow effect. So ideally, if everything was going perfectly, I would have loved to do the unveiling on uh the Festival by the Sea and make like a two day artistic celebration with people in there, and everyone is celebrating art, you know, in Manchester, bringing the New England Sculptors Association of Sculptors in town and um but we'll see, we'll see what the timeline looks like.
I think you, I think you clearly have the support of.
Absolutely.
Thank you so much, it means the world to me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. You mean that, right?
Yeah.
The next items is to authorize the town to interfere to execute the regulatory agreement for the powderhouse land apartments. I'm gracious.
No. We have members from the Affordable Housing Trust here to walk us through. This is, I'll let them walk us through, but basically we put this uh on the agenda so that once legal signs off on this agreement, uh it can be executed efficiently and not have to wait for the next next meeting.
I'm Kevin, I have a lot of trouble with being handed something of this depth density at the meeting.
Yeah.
I really would like even I would really like a chance to read it.
Yeah, absolutely. Can you, can you uh give us a brief overview?
Be giving you, yeah. So um because the town is putting the units on the S H I, the town has a certain oversight responsibility. The owner is responsible for income verifying all of the the peep eligibility for the apartments and making sure people are continued to be eligible. They're supposed to report to the town once a year, so that the town can validate that they're doing their job. And if they want to raise rents, they're supposed to be notifying the town and E O H L C. I wasn't aware that this was required, and it raises a question that I would suspect we have, the town has already signed some of these. Because um Bliman Circle required affordable units that are on the S H I, and Sawmill Circle required affordable units that are on the S H I, and what unless the states change their rules, I'm assuming we had to sign a regulatory agreement and have a certain oversight responsibility, which I'm not sure we're following through on, so what I was, I mean, we'd really like the signs, we can get the darn things on the S H I. Um but this winter, I thought I might do a little research on the whole subject to be able to to come up with exactly what the town's responsibility is and who's gonna do it. Um it's, I think it's a checklist. You you know, that that there's very little responsibility on the town, but it is a checklist, and I don't believe we've been doing it on the the other.
Yeah.
The other groups. I think no one here was on the select board of select them when those other agreements were were gonna get the word signed, so. Yeah. But it's ju, you know, it's it's, I read it, I looked at it.
I trust you.
I. I, you know, I highlighted the areas. That this has to be recorded with the registry of deeds, so I thought I might check those other two locations and see if there's a regulatory agreement. We're going with the registry of deeds.
Wouldn't our, wouldn't our league town council know that?
No.
No.
I don't know, I don't know when those were.
Oh, Bliman Circle was that close to fifteen years?
Fifteen years ago.
Yeah, I mean, and you know, in a little town, stuff goes to somebody and um it vanishes, I mean, this agreement is dated June twenty twenty-three. So this has been floating around the town for two and a half years, with nobody really understanding what needed to be done, because it started with Sue Brown, then we had Betsy Ware, and then we had Mark. None of whom were familiar with what was required, so it's not like this is.
Getting this on the S H I would be nice, but it's not going to bring us up to.
Well, and the and the units are affordable, and I think that's what people forget. The units are deed restricting, they're affordable. The only thing the S H I gives us, and it makes us jump through thousands of hoops, and I'm not sure it's worth it, is to hold off a forty B. Well, right now, we're in protected status for the forty B, because S L V is in the courts. But still, people in town contributed to this purchase.
Yes, and they're very annoyed.
With the understanding they would be on the S H I, and also with the understanding that it could keep S L V out, and unfortunately, the timing was such as the application had already been submitted. So, no matter what happened.
I have a quick question on this, is it, can the Affordable Housing Trust be responsible for the the requirements that the, like can the town designate the Toronto?
I mean, the the Affordable Housing Trust could do it and then, you know, give a report to the select board. Or somebody in town that, you know, and I think that's what we need to have a conversation with Tony about is where does it make sense to have it done, your Affordable Housing Trust's volunteers. You know.
And you don't have the continuity of, yes, your volunteers are there for a long time, but sooner or later. No, I'm sorry.
Well, and we were originally, the Affordable Housing Trust was originally sorted um supported by Sue Brown, who was a town planner. Now, our support person is Gail Hunter, who's not anything to do with the land use area.
But this is, so this is an operational responsibility.
Yes.
It should not be, in my opinion, conducted by any type of committee, it needs someone to own it. Some member of town staff to own it, which is why I thought I could at least pull together what the requirement is.
I mean, is there maybe somebody in another town that knows more than we do that can help us with this?
I'm sorry, we've been messing with this for three and a half years, there has been zero support from the state, zero support from anybody as to what's required, because this was an existing apartment building. So taken over, not new construction, and no estate money was included.
I don't think that's just.
Situation must have come up somewhere in the state at some point, I mean, maybe there's somebody in another town out there who's dealt with this that.
Well, I I I think a question though uh is for other towns that manage their S H I, right? Who does it, is it the town planner, is it some other operations leader, you know, in town staff, who does it? I think that's interesting data for Tony to peruse, um you know, just to, how is it normally staffed? And then whether or not they've encountered this specific scenario, maybe not, but they're familiar with that process, they're probably in a better position to.
See, the Manchester Housing Authority is a state agency, so those aren't an issue.
Is this, is this then require an annual operational follow-up with regard to what's on the S H I list each year?
It requires the owner to to notify the town.
So so.
So yeah, I guess my question, so are we, are we getting that?
No. So plain devil, plain devil's advocate, it's something that could be put on the list for our independent auditors to audit us on. Okay, that 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 way you make sure it gets done.
Yeah, it sounds like a problem.
I'm just saying, you know, I'm just saying, we we're either gonna get our act together.
It's not, it's not a financial issue.
I'm I'm not talking.
No.
Financial, I'm not talking financial.
It's not an independent audit situation, really.
You can audit anything, they're not, it's not, I'm not talking about financials, I'm just saying, you know, we need some accountability, we need someone to own the process. We need some way of making sure that um it doesn't fall through the cracks. And and uh, you know, I'll let Tony stew on that and see who he'd like to have own it, but to make sure things get done, one way to make sure things get done, and you know, is to put it on the list of things to be audited, so.
It's so E O H L C is also, there the owners required to report and request to the municipality and E O H L C. So is there a way we?
We should be able to find out from E O H L C what other communities, how they're processing this.
Yep, and they should be, they should be undergoing those those entities that are supposed to be reporting to us, right?
Owners.
Those owners, you know, are they getting?
To be honest, Kathy, this seems to me like this is a regulation that is not necessarily monitored, because if it was monitored.
They'd be honest.
Asking us for certification on the other units we have on the, have had a head on the S H I for years. So I'm not sure how much we want to delve into it with the state.
I'm not suggesting we delve into it with the state, that's not what I'm suggesting.
You don't open a can of worms.
That's a good idea, ask other questions, I mean, questions of other towns.
Other towns.
You got this, who's dealing with this?
I mean, probably Wenham, Wenham is a lot.
Okay.
Somebody must do it.
Right.
I can reach out to Wenham, and some of our.
Or even some towns that are above the ten percent, right? You know?
Ipswich would be your.
Ipswich.
Yeah, yeah.
And andover is over ten percent.
Beverly.
Yeah, but Beverly's big, see, those have people on staff to do things.
Okay, it's still.
Beverly and Andover would have staff people to do it, the Ipswich probably wouldn't, and Wenham wouldn't, and and I think that's the problem is, is that for most of this Affordable Housing Trust, you guys can, you know, say, most of the towns have people actually doing that, employees.
John Feyerbach, former chair of the Affordable Housing Trust, Harold Street, there's also a distinction, I think what we're talking about now is this H A S H I, but the state administers that, the housing, voting on housing tax credit program, which um creates many units that puts towns over the ten percent. That is so strict because of in terms of monitoring, because there's investors who are um investing funds into it. And uh so it's very, um compliance is really extra tight. I am not so clear about how the S H I, which is non-monetary, so it's really just you know, chief executive officer of the town has got to certify, you know, annually that the that the units comply tenants are eligible, but I don't know how how strict that is, but I do know tax credit, you know, Powderhouse does, you know, additional work, and with tax credits later down, that will be very, that will be monitored very, very tightly, is because the risk of non-compliance to an investor is so is so great. And Chris could probably talk that out more since he's, he's a in the business of that.
This year.
Uh I can't, well, I I think John is right, if there are huge numbers of tax credits in a project, investors are gonna be like eagles, because the tax credits go away if there's a non-compliance issue. Uh but I want to sort of say something about Jeb, Jeff's point, which is this is really actually a very odd situation, where a group of citizens got together, raised a lot of money to make this happen, there's no state involvement at all, so we're we're kind of go running around the.
How how is that different from the Sawmill um and 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 the Bliman Circle, where they took an existing they took existing houses and and turned them into.
I'm not sure it's much different, yeah, because those were affordable.
That's true, they're inclusionary zoning, they were sort of set aside by zoning, no, and maybe that's.
That would be just, so there wouldn't have been investors in that affordable component worried about keeping them affordable.
That's very good.
And the one on Central Street was sold. I don't know if the town was notified.
So twelve, twelve Summer Street is a uh forty B. There are affordable units there, and there is a monitoring thing going on.
But that's under M H A.
I just.
The apartments are, but there's two condos there.
Yeah.
That are affordable, and one came up for sale. And it was very confusing as to what needed to be done, and my sense is it it's probably something that the town didn't understand which of those two units are actually affordable units. Um we can't rely on realtors.
Yeah, yeah, it was a deed restriction. I was gonna say, they got a deed restriction.
Yeah, it comes up on a title search, but still.
Okay, um it sounds to me as if there's some more work to be done before we take a vote on this. Yeah, I I for one, in addition to wanting to read through it, um I would like to know who who's gonna own responsibility for whatever it is that requires oversight, you know, who in town hall is gonna you know, if the government that takes care of it.
Just skimming through this, it's not there's, there's, there's some significant responsibility in here on the town's part. So it's not like just uh asking an admin to sign up.
It's not, it's not administrative position.
Yeah, this is a.
It's not Gail Hunter's.
Right.
I'm not, you know, not to, not saying that I have a problem with it, we just gotta look into that and figure out.
And and I think that what people do need to be aware of time is of the essence to, from the standpoint that the Affordable Housing Trust pulled in Bruce Tar and Bronte's office to get E O H L C to pay any some attention to us. Um so they've approved it, and they're looking for the town to sign it, just so you're aware.
That that's fine, but the town doesn't sign things without reading them. Right, right, I understand. I think the only other thing, Tony, I mean, I um what I'm looking for is somebody on your staff to own it, okay? As far as the logistics of managing the operation, that can be done possibly through a third party. That's what, that's what I mean by maybe audit's not the right word, but you can hire, you know, you possibly could hire a consulting organization to make sure all the i's are dotted, t's are crossed, an annual, you know, pay somebody else to go do it, but there's gonna be someone on the staff that's responsible for making it happen, you know, you you can take that approach, you don't necessarily have to hire somebody or whatever, so I I think there's many different ways to make sure it gets done, um but we ought to read it to make sure we know what it is.
Um we should put this on our neck, on the agenda for our next meeting, and see how much progress we've made, but as Sarah thinks that the time is of the essence, then we need to keep hammering at it. Or the town makes a decision that they don't want to. Or the town makes a decision that they don't want to jump through the hoops that the state has created, doesn't want to put anything on the S H I, you're not required to. That's the other alternative.
Is, is there a deadline associated with this at all, in terms of when you submitted? The wheel just keep grinding?
So Powderhouse Lane has rented out more than 25% of the units to income-eligible, but none of them count.
Because we're gonna come through the hoops.
This wasn't submitted, and so none of, they're gonna continue to rent the units, but they're not gonna start counting towards the 25% until the state receives this signed.
Isn't there a lottery process that has to happen too?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
So when they turn.
So, until they turn older, they still wouldn't be included, right?
Right, and they can't start doing that, it, it doesn't, they can have a lottery today, but it won't count.
Right.
Because they've gotta have, the state has to have this first, and so they've been I, I don't know how many units have been rented, it's well more.
I think there was 13 or 14.
Yeah, so half, almost half of them have been rented to income-eligible and indeed restricted, but we can't use them to apply for the 25% to get all of the units on the S H I, because they were done before
Yeah.
the state had it.
But it's clear that they gotta approve the affirmative housing plan, which by understanding, if that hasn't been approved, it's really, really close. And then this year, and once that's done, then every new unit that is, uh, created because of a vacancy would be marketed according to the affirmative housing plan, and that'll be number one unit that goes to S H I. Next vacancy, same marketing, rent to income eligible, that's number two S H I. Once we get eight of all 29 become S H I eligible.
Okay.
We get 25%.
Right, but that's, I mean, these people in theory have to voluntarily leave, I mean, they have a lease and it comes up year to year to year, but they may say, I'm gonna stick around.
That's right.
And they have every, every right to do so.
Yep.
Right, they have to maintain their.
That's part of the challenge, is because they've been renting to income-eligible people.
Right, just because they're doing that.
I don't know if it's more difficult now.
But it's not benefiting us, because even though they're income-eligible, they're not a lottery people.
That's a couple for S H I.
No, it doesn't.
But it's benefiting the town.
Oh, yeah.
By having the affordable units, even if they're not on S H I.
Even if we have this, sign this tonight and it's all ready to go, we're still years away from those apartments.
Of those eight?
They turn more quickly.
It really depends on the vacancies and, and when, how, how they're created. If this were signed tonight and you have the approval of the fir- affirmative marketing plan, the next tenant would be eligible, and we just start counting up to.
Right, but you're gonna get their eight of these.
The first, they start, they count individually from day one, it's when you get eight that you count the entire complex.
You only need eight to count the entire complex.
I understand that, but where are these eight coming from? You don't have eight empty apartments right now, right?
It's a pot of vacancy, yeah.
I mean, they've been turning over rapidly.
Yeah.
They've had 13 in what, four years?
No, three.
But since they did their marketing about a year, you know.
Three.
Yeah, the last, last five years.
It's gonna take at least two years.
I have another question.
Yes, I have.
If there is a cost associated with administering this on the town side, can the trust cover the cost of that, whether it be a consultant or salary?
I would think the trust would be able to do that, because it's in the, it's in the support of maintaining affordable housing units, I mean, we were paying a portion of Sue Brown's salary when she was supporting the Affordable Housing Trust.
By a lot of outsourcing with them.
Yeah.
Well, I assume it's not in anyone's job description right now.
We were supposed to.
That's not outsourcing, is you outsource things that are not your core competency to people who can do it.
And you agree, Kathy, there's a cottage industry.
Totally.
That we can just contact.
Yeah.
We can maybe put out a bid.
Yep.
And then just work with someone specifically on this, and they, you know, build hourly or so, but they, it, it's like in their bloodstream, and they.
Exactly, they'll do it faster than.
Who's the question?
All right, so we have some homework to do over the next week or so then on that.
Thank you for.
Thank you.
Yes. We've made a lot of progress in the last month or two.
Sarah, in the past, in the past two weeks, I feel like we've made more progress in the past two years, so thank you, Sarah.
It's like we're in the muck, and the muck keeps sinking a little deeper, and we want it to dry out.
Case we know where.
We know where the muck is, right?
And I'm gonna go home in time for the game, thank you.
That's true.
Eight oh six, the game's at eight fifty.
One quickly.
You're in time, she's gonna move away.
All right.
Okay.
Now, let's see, so we don't need that motion.
Okay, we have some reports.
Uh, let's see. D P W, leaders are on schedule, running about seventy-five to a hundred a week, that's going along fine. I will say, I, I don't know if your comments are gonna include something on the senior center with the meeting that we had a week ago, or two weeks ago.
You can.
I, I might comment on a follow-up to that, about a week and a half ago, presentation was made by John Harden, well, about the, the floor plan for the senior center. There must have been, what, twenty-five people here, a lot of seniors and other people that were interested to get kind of buy-in on what, what appropriately might be the, the architectural arrangement, and kind of a consensus was drawn, was pulled together, and Nate today was with the seniors this morning at the coffee to kind of follow up with comments from that, and the seniors feel pretty good about the way the layout looks. I'm not gonna share it here at this point, but, um, they're right now in a costing analysis, because there is a favored plan, but there are two others, and then there are three plans that are gonna be put together, and depending upon if the money differential is big, that's gonna become a factor, if it's fairly minor, then they'll probably go with their favorite plan. But that's in the works right now, and I guess that bidding or that, that estimating, estimating is gonna happen by the end of this month, I think, it'll be the end of the month.
Maybe to the end of the month, yeah.
Okay, all right, so, things are cranking along, uh, on that, so that covers the D P W and the seniors, that was a two-for-one deal. Library, there's, there was no update there, and, uh, the H D C will meet next week, so I don't have an update.
So a couple of things, um, on the downtown improvement committee, Mark Resnick appeared at the last committee and talked about some of the, you know, proposed zoning changes for the downtown, um, and it was mentioned that he was looking to hire an engineering firm to bring the downtown improvement two dot O strategy up to a level of design where we could apply for a Mass Works grant. Um, I guess a 25% design is required to apply for that grant, and so, um, there were questions at the downtown improvement committee, okay, what does that mean? Are you talking about revisiting the, the design? And Mark said, no, he just wants another level of detail, so I'm gonna meet with, uh, Mark on Wednesday to better understand what he's trying to do and, and kind of be a broker between the committee and Mark, and see, see, see that we're all on the same page, uh, see, see where things are at there. Um, the other item, bike and ped, I had a couple of interesting discussions around micro-mobility, so I learned a new term. Micro-mobility, I guess, includes, uh, devices such as e-bikes and e-scooters. So there was a lot of discussion, should the bike and ped, or they were proposing having a discussion on should they change and amend their charter to include such micro-mobility devices like e-bikes? Because right now, that's not part of their charter to revise the town on, so, um, it was brought up at the last meeting, they'll put it on the next month's agenda to have a formal debate and discussion, and then they would come forward to the select board, you know, with a recommended update if they thought that was the right thing to do, they're not clear on that, because they, they really are focused on non-motorized. You know, items like pedestrians and normal bicycles, but there have been so many issues and controversies in the state on the e-bikes that they want to at least take a look at it. The other item they mentioned was, I guess, the accessible, uh, trail in Powderhouse was endorsed by the Concom, so they're, they're gonna be proceeding to, to work on that. I think they are, um, gonna be working on a grant proposal, if I recall, I can't read the handwriting, but, um, anyway, that's moving along, so, uh, they're talking about a, a trail that would start, uh, at the end of Newport Park and, um, have possible handrails installed on, on the trip, certain pieces of the train, and the train itself would, um, you know, be made to be more accessible for wheelchairs, et cetera, so a small trail going from Newport Park to Pine Street, where the, um, other entrances, uh, that, like the, the there's two entrances on Pine Street, so it would be the Pine Street entrance that's closest to the gas station. So anyway, those two things are moving along, and I think that was it for me.
I correct. They're running along during wherever they do, uh, they're getting ready for, uh, so basketball starts this weekend, as does their, uh, being, uh, Santa Claus, uh, little stroll, so they're cranking up, and they're also already planning Fourth of July for next year, 250th anniversary, so they're trying to make it a little bigger, there'll be a fundraiser at the Legion on March 7th. Yes, and they're looking at other ways of raising some funds, like there's a special event. You know, the, uh, C B A, uh, continued the cargo, another, there's some questions that they continued until this month. Nothing Concom, so, uh, I think I need this week or next, we're good.
Um, the Planning Board continues their work on downtown zoning, and, uh, they have a public forum this Thursday night. Hoping to attend, but my week is not looking too good at this point, but I'm gonna try to make the, um, hybrid advisory should meet next week, if they can get a quorum together, and Essex Tech has nine applications as of last Monday for the class of twenty-third.
Well, I, I think I asked a question maybe a couple of months ago, so how many students are there from Manchester now?
There are two, well, I think, right now. So this, I mean, obviously this will fill our five, like I talked about before.
Yeah.
Yeah. So we'll have five round one, and then who knows what we'll have.
Other than the rest, they're at risk.
Yeah.
So to speak.
Yeah.
Okay.
The order of help decided not to, to withdraw their request for, uh, to Desmond Avenue for receivership. The they've agreed that it is, it is not inhabited, and, and therefore the, the details of a habitable building don't apply, um, and the, the gates and their sons seem to be making progress cleaning up the debris and, um, the walls in the process, it hasn't been completely rebuilt since the press. The finance committee looked at the same capital list that we have looked at, um, and had agreed that they needed to think about it some more, and there'll be more discussion of it at their, at their next meeting. No surprise that boats and, and trailer and dry were hot buttons.
Anything else, or just?
I believe that was really good. And the movement, um, agreed on a calendar for, um, producing their budget. Tomorrow night, they're doing, it's presented to the committee, um, and each year they have a very aggressive schedule for bringing their budget forward, which unfortunately isn't consistent with the information, where, when they can get the information, for example, about their insurances. So, um, they should have everything together by February, and then in March, they learn about their health insurance. So, I don't hold up great hopes for the, the calendars there, just not very realistic. We've already talked about their attempts to influence the reorganization with the organization of Chapter Seven. We have a consent agenda.
Make the motion to approve this consent agenda.
John.
Uh, let's see, we did, we did update, Kathy, you did update the minutes.
Debbie sent them out.
There were a couple of attributions that were.
There were three that she handed.
Was it three? Well, I saw two.
Two for you, and then one for, uh, uh, resident commenting.
Okay.
Yeah, she did.
Uh, then I say, uh, yes.
Says yes, Kathy?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
And Jeff?
Yes.
Okay, town administrators.
Yeah, I was gonna mention the Planning Board Public Forum Thursday, um, at six thirty here in this room, it's also hybrid. The, most of my time, uh, and Andrea's time has been spent on preparing for, you know, the budget and capital review and capital requests and operational budget requests, so we met with the finance committee, as Anne mentioned uh, last week on the twentieth. We're meeting with department heads now, uh, reviewing their operational requests, and our next, uh, our next select board meeting will be a joint meeting with the finance committee, uh, on the fifteenth to, for that first budget presentation to both, uh, to both committees as a group. Um, we've also begun contract negotiations, we've had our first meeting with the clerical union and the fire union. Uh, we're also have the, D P W is next, uh, for us to meet with and start the process with them as well. Uh, so a lot of, a lot of time has been spent, you know, between those three things alone. And M V P, uh, two point O, we had, uh, some regional calls with Rockport Gloucester and Essex, uh, regarding, uh, submission for M V P two point O. M A P C, uh, will be working with M A P C as a consultant to put the application forward, uh, to the state. And then we're also applying as a region, uh, for an action grant under M V P for the Culver Project. We had a call today, uh, with, um, with the state as a recap of our expression of interest. So we first submit a letter of interest saying that we intend to apply, uh, for this grant, and briefly discussed uh, the different elements of the project. The R F R for the action grant, uh, process goes out, the, all they could say was January. Once the R F R goes out, we, they can't really engage with us on elements of our application, so also, this month, you know, a big priority of ours is gonna be to kind of work out some of a draft application and communicate with the state on that before the R F R comes out, so if we can get any feedback, uh, from them. Uh, essentially, they said, you know, where you're applying for a regional grant at the maximum, you really have to knock it out of the park with this application, uh, so it's gonna be really important that we nail that down and work with our neighboring towns on that as well, so we got a lot of good feedback today, uh, we're gonna look at. So we got a lot of good feedback today, uh, we're gonna look at the previous R F R. Uh, the application has changed a little bit, but generally it's the same type of information that they're gonna be requesting. Um, and, you know, we really wanna speak specifically to. The different funding sources that we have, uh, itemizing what those funding sources are gonna go towards. Cause you can't overlap, uh, the items that money's gonna go to. Um, to talk about, uh, that the federal funding does expire in April. Um, that, uh. We're, you know, highlighting it's, they really don't wanna see a maintenance project. They wanna see long-term resiliency. So really speaking to, um, you know, how we're planning for future conditions, not necessarily the existing state of the culvert. Um, getting letters of commitment from each community. Uh, refer, you know, just going in depth as to what the, what action items are gonna occur in those other communities. Um, mostly that's gonna be public outreach. Designing for a hundred-year storm event, um. How the plants, and then nature-based solutions is another big element. Uh, so we're gonna speak to, even though that the, the action grant funds that we're applying for wouldn't go towards the nature-based solution. That's really the NOAA funds that we have for the Sawmill Brook restoration. You know, really speaking to how that project can't happen until the Culver project happens. So, um, we got a lot of great feedback from them today and, uh, we'll be working on that. Um, and then lastly, I just would say we have, uh, we have a, um, toy drive happening here in the town hall. For those still paying attention on, on Zoom, um, we're accepting, uh, unwrapped toys from November twelfth. Uh, to December twelfth here in the town hall. There's a box right in the main, um, foyer. And there's also a Q R code there for any online donations or, um, to pull up the Amazon wishlist. Uh, for toys that, uh, kids have specifically requested, and this is a partnership with Kate Band Kids.
Call ya.
One other, one thing, um, on the ninth, at, at six o'clock. Um, the Essex Elementary School, uh, committee is going to do a presentation of, of where they are and, and what's going on. It, yeah, it will be at the, if you want to.
We're doing police activities, uh.
Yeah.
That's just.
Is the, and I'm just trying to look online real quick to double check, but is the, um, is the tree lighting this?
The tree lighting is Sunday.
Sunday, okay.
It's part of this whole, the first weekend of, uh.
Santa comes on Saturday, I hope.
All right.
Weather permitting. I know.
We'll make sure we publish the information on social media.
Yeah, this here, too.
Yeah.
Is it all scheduled right here?
Yeah.
Which they mentioned. Looking to return.
Uh, we, we, we have executive session in the last week. So.
Yeah, we can move into, go into executive session.
All right, I'm hoping we go into executive session to consider the purchase exchange. Pursuant to general laws, chapter thirty-eight, paragraph twenty-one A six. To consider purchase exchange, please, for value, value of real estate property in the Sonic Falls and Tur- Church Street. If the shares, shareholders, that over being made a detrimental effect on the negotiation position of public body. And to do so declare, not to return to open session.
So I can.
John?
Yes.
Anne says yes, Kathy?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
And Jeff?
Yes.
Okay, so we can close off the, um, feed.